Alrighty, let me go ahead and call the meeting to order. Attending this evening, we have select board members Barney Arnold, David Modell, and Alan Lewis. Well, I'm speaking, they can't read. So we will, we, and we also, I see Peggy Wang is here, and Tim Goddard is the town administrator, Jen Gibbons, the assistant to the board, Christina Genie and Mary Lynn are here also. So let's go ahead and get started. I'll read the agenda. At seven o'clock, we'll have community input at 7:15, sorry, 7:05, the LEPC update. And I don't see Chief Fisher here yet. I don't know if he's coming or not. If not, I guess I can do that. 7:15, the town clerk's request. 7:45 treasurer collector requests. These are both budget items. 8:15, long-term budget priority discussion. And I didn't, I don't anticipate we will be just doing all of those discussions tonight. When I sent that out earlier this week, it was really, or last week, it was just to suggest these are things we might talk about and perhaps do one at each meeting, not six of them at one meeting. So we can, we can talk about what our, which ones we might like to do first. 9:15, the town administrators' report. 9:25 liaison reports. 9:40 approval of minutes and warrants, and 9:45 tentative adjournment. And as usual, if we have to, we can take things a little out of order. The ones we have to do on time, and I know, I see Peggy's already here. But I'm assuming Kim will be along to do hers, so we'll save that time as a time certain.
I figured out, you're like, Alan, you're like the airlines. When, when the restriction came in that they were measuring on-time performance, the airlines stretched their estimated, you know, flight duration times. So they all came in on time. With your agenda and your time setting, you've done.
Well, I don't, I don't actually set the times. Tim, Tim does that. So I just, I just go on the agenda items. But we'll see. Hopefully, we may, we may get done before 10 o'clock tonight. That'd be good. All right. Is there any community input tonight? You could just raise your hand. I don't see any. All right. Then we'll go to the LEPC report. And John Fisher is not here this evening, so I can say the LEPC has been, again, meeting every Monday, talking about planning, mostly recently about planning for the vaccine clinic. We did get through the fine work of Chief Fisher and especially Chief Soros. We took delivery of free 4,000-pound caissons, which will keep our new structure that's on a truck somewhere heading this way to give for vaccinations, will keep it from flying away on the wind, and keeps us from having to drill 35 one-foot-deep holes in the parking lot of the congregational church, which they didn't seem worried about, but we were certainly worried about it. And so we're glad we don't have to do that. But they, they found a free source of these. The Public Works Department and Chief Soros went over and picked them up, I think, yes, yesterday. And they've been delivered. They're now sitting in the parking lot of the congregational church, waiting for the structure to come. As soon as it's in, they'll be secured, and that's a really nice way to do it. And we'll get the spikes anyway, in case we move it to someplace that doesn't have a hard surface on it that we have to drill holes in. The, and the LEPC has been really trying to decide what its duties are versus the Board of Health and the Vaccine Subcommittee, and that all kind of got straightened out yesterday. I think pretty much to everybody's satisfaction. And it looks like, it looks like Phase Two will begin on February 1st. That's for people 75 and over. And, but it looks like we will be limited to perhaps 100 doses of vaccine. That's not going to do much for us. But it's apparently, there's a real problem with that. So we'll put in for it, see what we get. It looks like the 9th of February might be the earliest that we get some of that. We don't know yet. But the applications have been sent in. The Board of Health has been doing a good job of crossing their i's and dotting their t's. So we are all prepared to go. Whenever the vaccine's available, we'll be ready to receive it and be ready to administer them as quickly as possible. So we'll leave it for that. If you, we ask people, please refrain from calling the COA or the Board of Health wondering where the vaccines are. They don't know. And as soon as, as soon as we do get definitive information on the availability of the vaccines, everybody will be notified and we'll go from there. On the other hand, if you are, and I'm looking at the people who are attending this meeting, I think there's no problem there. If, if you don't have an email address with the COA, and you don't have a computer, and you don't read the mosquito, let the COA know so they can call you and tell you when things are available. But I don't, I don't think, I don't, I don't see anybody on here who that would really apply to. So that's about it for LEPC. We're going to be continuing to meet on Mondays. The Board of Health and the Vaccine Subcommittee also generally meets on Monday night. They may actually have an extra meeting this week, but I can assure everybody that's planning is going ahead forthwith. And, and we're doing everything humanly possible to try to get the vaccines here as quickly as possible. But it's, it's a little bit of a hassle, frankly. But other states, I was talking to my brother in Connecticut today, and he and his wife have already been vaccinated. So it's a little frustrating for Massachusetts. Anyway, okay. Peggy, if you're ready to go, we can take you now, unless there are any questions. Hearing none. Peggy, you're on.
Oh, great. Thank you for letting me join the meeting tonight. I had sent out something that, the reason I'm requesting the time with you is because I'd like to have a salary adjustment for the town clerk in the FY '22 budget. The current salary for the town clerk is $65,488. And it's my contention that this really isn't a livable wage for living in the town of Carlisle, which as town clerk and elected official, I have to live in the town of Carlisle. And Tim Goddard had suggested that I compile some data from other town clerks and communities, which I sent to you. Thank you, Kate. She kind of spiffed it up, and then I think she circulated it to everybody else.
She did.
That shows a comparison of salaries. I wasn't able to get every town to respond. But mostly the ones that are in the community that the Personnel Board uses, all but two responded. And, and I'm sure you can see, see that most of the town clerks in, that are on, used by the Personnel Board are elected, and most of them in the contiguous communities are appointed. And hours are very, I work, I pay for 35 hours. Others are as low as 27 hours in the, some of the smaller communities. Others are a total of 40 hours. I did not get any information on what, how many assistants they had, if they had one assistant town clerk, and then any other help to manage everything that goes on in the town clerk's office. We here have an assistant town clerk that works 24 hours a week. And we currently don't have any senior volunteers. So we're getting a little bit behind in our filing because that's generally what they've done. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'm just, I'm asking for some sort of review and some adjustment to the salary.
Thank you, Peggy. Are there any questions for Peggy? Kate, you're muted. Yep.
As, are all these, are all the town clerks also notaries? Do you know?
Yeah, I believe they are, yes.
Okay. And are you working towards your notary?
Yes, I am.
Okay. When, when do you think you're going to have that?
I'm hoping by the end of February.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Any other questions for Peggy? Peggy, have you, have you been to the Finance Committee with, with this yet, or are you scheduling, are you scheduled to?
I'm with the Finance Committee tomorrow at 4:00.
Tomorrow. Okay, thank you. Barney?
Peggy, yeah, I, I didn't have a chance to do the math myself. I'm, do you, I mean, I think you would have added it on here if you had it, but the sort of per hour.
Oh.
Hard to make all the comparisons, you know.
Barney, that's, that's what I did, actually. I did all the hourly rates. You didn't get a copy? Because I did ask Tim to circulate those.
Oh, well, I've got a spreadsheet from, from Peggy, well, not spreadsheet, but you know, kind of a list from Peggy dated 1/22.
Right. Kate sent one with, with, which added the hourly rates.
Oh, whoa, whoa, I haven't looked at that. I mean, sorry, I didn't, maybe I over, I must have overlooked it.
Let me, let me send you that right now.
I think it was called spiffing up or something.
No wonder I didn't open it. Sorry, Peggy. Yeah. And Peggy, did you, do you have any sense of the, I mean, how, how comparable the duties are of the town clerks in the other towns as compared to yours? I mean, I don't have any sense of that.
Well, town clerk's responsibilities are, are the same across the Commonwealth in terms of managing elections, record-keeping, the census, the dog license. And, you know, the only thing that would be different are specific projects like what we're having with the management of the vault. That's something that we're doing, and I don't know that other towns also have a management of a vault. They certainly are the, we're all the holder of records on minutes and agendas and other reports. But no, the, the responsibilities are basically the same across the Commonwealth. It's just that those who have larger sections, some have more licensing responsibilities, like licensing for gas stations, regulations that they have to, to follow up on and take care of. We don't have as much as that. The only ones that we really do are the DBA, the Doing Business As License and Dog License. So the larger communities have more that they have to do because of the kind of, you know, they have more businesses to manage.
Yeah, yeah.
Peggy, do you have, I know you haven't been town clerk all that long, but do you know when the last time of something, other than just the cost of living raise was given?
No, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Alan?
Yep.
Yep. Because the clerk is an elected position, it was not included in the wage and classification study. It couldn't be because it's an elected official. So to my knowledge, at least the past 12 or so years I've been in town, it's increased only by the, the cost of living adjustment that's made for the non-union employees. So there hasn't been any other adjustment to the, to the clerk's salary in that time, except for the, you know, the annual.
Thank you, Tim. That's very useful. Yeah.
Yep.
I just want to add, though, I've been doing some comparable towns for another project and talking, looking at documents and document policies. And most of those policies reside with the town clerks. Regardless of whether it's really a town clerk document or not, they're the ones that have been taking the lead on, on seeing that documents are not retained past their shred dates in general for each department.
Um, and, and so is this, if, if, if there were, would this go to the Personnel Committee then to, no, it doesn't?
Because it's a, it's an elected position.
Elected, okay.
Only town meeting can set the salary. There's an article where the clerk's salary and the assessors' salaries are set, like Article 2 or something like that.
Yeah.
Because they're elected.
Okay.
If Peggy were appointed, she'd be on the wage and salary chart like every other employee.
Got you, got you. And so what the, then it would be a matter of whether or not we put forward a change in the salary to go on the warrant article.
Correct.
For town meeting. Got it.
Okay.
And I had one other, shoot, it was just in my head, and, oh. So it's kind of related, well, definitely is related, but it's not specific to this request is. You know, last year in the spring, we, we had talked about making a change in the town clerk position from elected to appointed. And, and we, but we, you know, given COVID and the need to have a, you know, as brief a meeting as possible, we, we put that off. And then when we talked about the fall, this last fall, we, I think, sort of pretty much for the same reason, we decided not to put that forward. I guess that's another question for us as the board.
Yeah. I, I should say that it's being essentially the only elected position that is paid a salary. That, that's one of the reasons that you might want to consider it not being an elected position going forward. But, but we're, we're happy with Peggy, and I think when we discussed it the last time, in fact, the, the language in the article was saying that until and unless Peggy decides not to run or, well, she didn't, she wouldn't have to, well, we can't open, she's, she still has to run for the position until, and then when she stops running for the position, that's when it would become an appointed position. Because we'd have to open it up, if it's, if it's not an appointed position, we would have to open it up to everybody. And we don't want to put Peggy under that kind of pressure.
All right. Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, on that point, I mean, would, would we consider then, Peggy, your term ends, your current term, I should say, is, you're in the first of three years?
No, this, this term ends in the next election, the next town election.
Oh, it's annual?
Annual.
Oh, I thought it was three-year terms. Oh, my God.
No, that's because I'm, I'm still filling, I'm still filling out Mary's term.
Right.
And so.
Okay. Ah, that's what it is.
So in, at the town, next town election, it would be for another three-year term.
Okay.
So what, let me ask you this, Peggy. I mean, one of the reasons you, you're obviously a resident of the town, or you couldn't, you wouldn't be eligible, so I get that. And so separating that from, just let's separate the financial issues aside. But you did indicate, you know, that one of the impediments, I guess, maybe that wasn't the word you used. But the fact that it is an elected position requires that it be given to a resident, and we're in a, you know, high cost of living town, we know that. And just, again, not for your particular case, and not for the time you choose to be a town clerk, but in the broad sense, do you think it should be elected or appointed?
Oh, I, I believe it should be an appointed position.
Okay, so that's good information.
Is your current assistant?
I mean, my view to the Select Board is we should, you know, we should allow it, I mean, we should separate those issues. If we think it should be appointed, we should probably move to that. And I don't know if that's this year or next year, but.
Well, as I said, whenever we go for that, I would like to make it clear that it's Peggy's job until she doesn't want it anymore. And then, because I don't want to push Peggy out of that job if that's the job she wants, you know. My, you know.
Kate, moving it from.
Yeah, just, this is your.
Moving it from.
Yeah, you're talking about the, the broad level, not.
Well, right, the first thing, again, you know, I mean, any good personnel, you know, human resource person would tell you not, a job description, a job position should not be about the individual, it's about the job, right? So we, as the Select Board, and it doesn't have to be this cycle, I don't care, but we, as the Select Board, should determine for ourselves what the appropriate, whether the position should be elected or appointed. Separate issue, Peggy, I agree, she's doing a great job, and there's no reason not to have her do that job, and there's no reason not to compensate her, you know, appropriately for the job she's doing. We shouldn't get that immersed in the elected versus appointed thing. If we believe that the right course of action is appointed, we should figure out a way to get to that point, you know, get to that step at some juncture.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Peggy. We will, we will certainly discuss this and go forward. And as, as you say, you'll be meeting with the Finance Committee, I guess, tomorrow, you said. And though, I'm sure they'll have their input as well. But thank you so much. And again, thank you for the job you do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. We're a little ahead of the game, but I see she is here. Kim, if you're ready to go, we can take your request now.
Hi. I didn't know how you do so. I figured I'd come on early in case you, didn't want to leave you sitting, waiting if you got finished early. Um, so in my budget this year, I'm requesting additional hours for one of my assistants, Anish. And I think I said to you and updated, I had done my budget included in, which brought it up like over $12,0950. And I said, you know, I really got to go back through my budget, had a little more time to really kind of see what the savings have been over this year too. So the initial cost of doing this would bring my budget up 4% to $11,450. The, the office is just, there's, there's just not enough full-time employees, FTEs, to cover the work in the office. As you see, there's 2.46 FTEs, and I'm moving it to 2.66. So we're not even three full FTEs. And it's Finance Director, Treasurer, Collector. We do Treasury, we do Collection, we do Payroll, we do HR, we do Benefits. I'm getting to the point where I cannot sustain the level that I'm putting out. I don't have any more people to give things to. And I knew coming in, you know, catch everything up, I've got 10 goals, I've knocked eight of them off. And the office is still, still behind. A big thing is the reconciliations. And that was something that was behind with my predecessors. I think if you look at my budget, you spent $18,750 in interim. Some of that was on a forensic audit. But a lot of that in FY '20 was to go back and balance between the accountant and the treasurer, which is very important, the receivables. So that was, you know, nothing is precarious, everything is, there's, and I see that now, and I'm kind of hearing that might have been an issue with my predecessors too, after Larry, is there's, there's just not enough time to get all the things done. And I'm finding more, like the tax-taking and things like that. So it's starting to concern me. And like I said, I've got a lot of stamina and I'm going, but I'm, I'm starting to, you know, especially with FinCom now, they want me to start doing the budget, which I would love to do and take on. I want to write policy. But, you know, if I don't do this bond refunding, and I don't get the tax bills, you know, out, and I don't get us balanced and stay up with that, those are going to become deficiencies in our audit. So what I'm asking, I'd like more, but I'd like to see if it can work with Anish taking her out of building one day a week, her Thursday, so the seven hours. And I've already talked to John, so I didn't want to cripple his department. Anish knows the office, she's good. The tasks I want her to do are my tasks that I'm going to pass down to her. So it's a higher-level work. That's why I have the $1,200 stipend in there. I believe Larry had given her a stipend. She's coming back to do work that I would do, that I need to pass off to somebody. So it's less than what my assistant gets, but she needs to have some type of, you know, leverage pay for the, for the level of what she's doing. This isn't just clerical, you know, work on that. I mean, eventually, you know, if she can, she does the payroll, I'd like her to fund the payroll and, and do that. That would free me up to do other things or keep up with this pace that I'm, you know, keeping up with. If you look down in my budget, we have, I've tried to free up time with, with the girls, more so with my assistant, and that's worked. But every time I free up time for her, there's another piece that goes back in there. And if you look at lines, the Equipment Service line, and then lockbox and process bills, I think it's five, six, and eight. You'll see the Equipment Service line went out. That was the machine, the old stuffer machine. So that's gone. We're, we're not stuffing our own bills. And then the lockbox number went up because we're now getting money right in the bank. Lockbox is collecting it, that's going through Century Bank, that's going great. And then the process tax bill amount went down because we're not paying for all the bills to be pre-printed and every, and everything. So that's being done through Kelly and Ryan. So if you add those three numbers together, it came to a savings of $3,050 for the town. So I'm very proud of that, and I think that was a good use of saving. So if I didn't put Anish in, my budget would be going, my budget would be going down. But it's also the time that now the girls, especially Kathy, isn't sitting and opening mail, or we're taking the time to stuff and do tax bills. We've also worked on our deputy collector, that we're utilizing them for the fee that we're paying. So things are moving, but I'm seeing it after being there a year that there are just things that with 2.46 FTEs, you cannot possibly keep up to date and get the work, get the work done. I don't know what else to say with that. I see it with Priscilla too. The financial staffs, financial offices, to me, aren't staffed enough from what I've come from experience to be able to put people on projects and get things done. And what happens is they become a priority, and the tax titles are pushed aside. And now those will be pushed aside if I'm going to do the bond refunding and if the tax bills go out. And like I said, I've been going, but I can't keep up the stamina of just, you know, it's, it's never going to get caught up. If I'm trying to be Finance Director, run a department and do all this, there's just not enough people for me to give the task to. So I'm asking that Anish come down. John has Nancy, so she's willing to take over the hours, so I'm not crippling that. And that's nice too, the continuity, because there's one, you know, she knows all about the office. Anish loves being in building, but she loves the finance, I think, more. And she knows I, I need her. She's done really well recently with the Maya Trans conversion. That's another thing. This week's all been Zooms with everything. Again, that takes time out of the office. So it's just, I, I want to succeed. I want the office to succeed. I want to keep moving along with all these things. I just don't have any more resources. And now when FinCom needs me, I want to do things, and I'm like, I don't have an hour in the day. So I just, you know, and I don't know, like, like I said, it's nothing, it's anybody, you know, prior to me. But when I came into seeing that and looking at even what the auditors have done, and you don't want to pay auditors to come back in and, you know, bring your, you know, receivables, you know, up, up to date. And then who's going to keep them? They should be done the 15th of every month, and that needs, you know, continuity. I still need to, there's bank accounts that I've found that don't reconcile to the GL, so that's timing. There's just all this. Plus, we need to move forward with the cash receipts module on the, on the, on the software. We need, we shouldn't be doing our cash book in Excel. It should be part of Munus and the budget program. So there's just so much that the town can, you know, evolve with, but you need resources to do that. So I guess I'm asking that you support this, and that bringing Anish in will, you know, at least one day, help to give, you know, free up a little more of my time, or let me finish these other tasks for you. So with that said, if you have any questions, if I didn't elaborate enough. With that said, if you have any questions, if I didn't elaborate enough.
I, you have already been to the finance committee, have you?
Tomorrow night.
You got, oh, you're tomorrow too, oh, they have a fun night tomorrow, good, yeah.
I did have a conversation with Jim because, you know, there's things, you know, without like, I'm like, Jim, really? I want to do your budget thing, but I'm just, you know, on a wall and talking to him tomorrow. So yeah, I'm just going to approach it. And I understand, that's why I went back through when I first did my budget. And there's a lot of projection in here because we're not full, the full year with, um, the, the changes that I've made. But because we're six months and I feel really confident that, you know, with the lockbox, like you'll see, you know, last year was three commitments and this year now is with the motor vehicle, now it's the taxes and the motor vehicle. So those three lines, like I said, I'm very, you know, I'm proud of that. I mean, I feel like that's a big savings, you know, three thousand for things and the time, you know, with them, like, you know, we're not, and I'm not pulling people from every department, which they were fantastic when I first came in to help stuff bills and, you know, do all that. And we're in COVID. So, um, you know, and the cost to just have a pre-printed bill is so much more expensive than a printer. They do it for like sixty-nine cents, they just print the bill out. I, there's a lot of proofing and this year was back and forth to get it all set. And I can take comments on that too, but, uh, setting it up in the first year, going through it. But that's a really true savings, you know, on that. So brings my budget down a little, but I am, I understand increasing the budget by four percent by asking for additional time for, you know, Anish, which I think she would be great. And it's, and it's an important task. Like I said, it's, I'd love to get a senior tax worker back in there and I guess they had somebody before. So I've lost that to, you know, stuff bills or do things like that. But this is a high level. You know, I can put her on the tax taking or I can have her do the cash things, you know, that are really high level that I have to be confident with who's, you know, working with me on that.
Not having a senior tax worker, is that, is that simply because people aren't requesting it?
Well, I wouldn't want anybody in there right now with COVID. My assistant was doing it before, which that may not be good in the same office too. But there was a lot going on with her family and things like that. So she stepped back saying, I've got enough on my plate and she has a, you know, she's got a, she's got a big load that, you know, she's, that she's got with the tax office, you know, with, with all the deposits and the things. So if it came back and we were comfortable, sure, instead of having, you know, every other week, you know, one of the girls or myself sitting there stuffing, you know, checks into envelopes to mail and go mail. That's a great senior, you know, tax worker, you know, thing to do. Or even just to answer the phone and divert to a different department. Because a lot of the phone calls need to go to assessor or whether I'm Warren, you know. Our taxpayers, other than wanting to write a check in the office, really, everything can be answered, um, you know, online or through the mail or through the Dropbox, you know, if they need to speak to me, fine. But it's really just the matter of paying an on-time or delinquent tax, you know, tax bill. And all those are up on the website. Like I said, our deputy collector, I've put that up now, we're trying to utilize him more. So we are freeing up more time, but now there's then this list that, you know, still needs to. And I, and I, I do get concerned. I mean, it keeps me up at night or I'm up at night, you know, doing it because, you know, we now we have the audit and we have everything else that's been pushed, you know, together. And if things aren't, you know, if your internal controls aren't there, it doesn't matter how many policies you have there. It all has to, you know, it all has to be, you know, come out together. And I've been pushing things down a little bit with the abatement process and all these other things. So I really right now have to stop and focus on the, um, the tax office and I, doing this, I wish you could start tomorrow. I know it's not until July, I mean, I could use her, you know, tomorrow, it's six months off. But I'd just like you to support it and I don't know your feelings, you know, with, with the offices. It's just, you know, it's, it's a large office that does a lot with only, you know, two, less than two and a half, um, FTEs. That, that's a lot.
Okay, questions for Kim?
David, you, did you have something or?
Uh, yeah, well, I got, I, I guess I have two sets of questions. So.
Sure.
I have a process question, which is, why are we hearing this? It seems to me that all that stuff is the purview of what you discuss with finance committee and also with Tim, since it's all under Town Hall. You know, I'm not adverse to it, but I don't, I don't think the select board's role is to get involved in the details of a department's operational budget for the coming year until, and if it rises, you know, to the level as, you know, where it's just distilled down to whether we're going to add or change the position of a new or some personnel board decision. All this other stuff, I, you know, I appreciate it. I've been through it all myself many times with years of finance committee and school board. It doesn't seem like an appropriate select board topic. And I guess I have to defer to the others who have longer tenure on select board to tell me whether that's right or wrong.
Maybe I could, uh, address that. I asked Kim to come tonight, so it might be. Maybe it's my fault, but you know, from past experience, I, I knew she was going to discuss this with the finance committee tomorrow night. I didn't want the board to be kind of behind the curve that the, you know, it's being discussed to someone's hours and the board wasn't aware of it.
You know, I don't know, Tim, I spent a lot of years on finance committees, you know, and the, the body and fender work of the budget, you know, or sausage making of the budget, I think is appropriately left to the finance committee. And they should sort of down select, distill the issues, figure out what makes sense and then.
Yeah, I, I think I agree on this, this, in this case, this is more of a management thing. This is not, um, where we, um, the position is changing in, um, it's complexion and where we would then be sending it to personnel. This is, uh, I would say, Tim, this would be in your, you know, wheelhouse also to.
Additional hours, do we have to go to personnel under the current structure? So.
Right, but, but Kim brought a lot of stuffing, so let me go move to my second point, we can come back to this.
I was, I asked him and he said, you know, before FinCom, so I figured I'd discuss my budget because it kind of went together, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand and in your place, I would do the same because you have an audience, right? Why not? But I think the other question I want to ask, which may, you know, also be part of this is, you know, I've run, I've run little businesses and big businesses. And, and when I run little businesses, I do a make-by decision on the value of having that internally versus externally. And to me, Carlisle in the, you know, portfolio of towns is a little business. So all the stuff you mentioned, the compliance stuff and doing this and doing that, there's got to be services out there that can do it more cost effectively than us doing it ourselves. Why, it's not like, I, I, and I don't want to put a value judgment because everything you do is very important. But does it have to be in-house?
I, I'm confused by that because everything I presented to you is things that were in-house that I put out house.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying you, you inherited the situation, you, you're new and you doing that. But I, it's more of a select board question. Why are we, why don't we explore? I mean, we may address some things in the short term to make sure Kim has the resources. But why shouldn't we explore as a select board outsourcing, you know, not the Kim function? Because you need somebody to manage it, but all the other stuff.
Well, that's a much bigger discussion, obviously.
Not an analysis, but, but the point is.
Right.
You know, we've looked, I just want to say, Bernie, I mean, we've looked at this many years, many times. Police, fire, school, Board of Health, I've covered, I've covered all those issues in one facet or another where we've looked at whether we, as a town, should be setting us up independently or outsourcing. And for a variety of reasons, we generally come down on the point of doing, doing it ourselves. But we really, over the long term, needs to strategically look at what is mission critical to own and what can be outsourced. And I, I, again, I don't want to single out finance or Kim's function, I just want to.
I have outsourced everything I can outsource and save as much as I can. The rest has to be in-sourced.
So is what you have right now, all what you consider has to be in-source?
Yes, I mean, I can't, I, if you hire somebody else to do my, you know, to do, to balance your, you know, receivables and stuff, you're paying an auditor a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So everything I could outsource to save money with, you know, lockbox and, you know, um, I put up, I put the link up, it wasn't up there for the deputy collector because we were collecting still delinquent motor vehicle when you're paying a deputy collector to do it. That, that's, that's.
What about, you know?
Those have all been totally outsourced and they're there. What's left still is, you know, you can't really outsource, you can outsource to a sense, a tax taking, I need an attorney, but it's pulling all those records in to, to, you know, to, to find out which ones need to go down that path. So you'd be hiring an auditor, which would be more. So the outsourcing in a collection office is the collection of bills, the printing of bills and things like that. Those are smart art outsourcing type of things to do. The rest is utilizing your software and, you know, not having duplication of work. Like the abatements, you know, Melissa now is on the software, she's doing it. Mary Ann was all excited the other day because it's making her life simpler. It comes right down to my office and we're eliminating, you know, a whole process and we're eliminating refunding money and making our taxpayers pay it to wait to get their money back. It's, you know, so those are the things you have to look at internally. Uh, you have to utilize your cash management, you know, blocks so that everything is streamlined. You're not putting it in the left-hand drawer and moving it to the right-hand drawer every, every day. But that is a bigger conversation. There's things that you can do immediately, which I've tried to do as finance director. And then there's things that going forward, like when Priscilla retiring, thinking about that and thinking about she inherited a, a general ledger that was from, you know, fifteen, eighteen years ago. Things have changed, that's the time to restructure that, which would take an outside source to rebuild your chart of accounts when somebody gets settled in. And then make that match to all your DOR reports, to, um, your cash management module, to scanning, to having departments start to put their own information in. So it's the streamlining, that, that is a bigger project and that's going to take manpower and you can consult someone on that. But for the immediate is, you know, I'm not sure with other departments, but for my department, that's why I said to you, if you take those three lines and, and divide them, you know, three thousand dollars was being spent on something, plus your time being done in-house that were easily taken out of house and sit your bank, money's in the bank faster, your, um, bills go out, whether COVID happens or, or not. Um, you know, you're not paying for a physical bill that you're storing, we're not storing all those bills anymore. So, so those are, those are the things that you can outsource. But the other day-to-day kind of stuff or, you know, the bank stuff, somebody taking those deposits and then processing through the system, that's going to be done, you know, within the office, the payroll. You know, we do have an outside, that's another one, but the payroll is huge and we have one eleven Fs now, we have teachers coming on. We have, I mean, one of my girls.
Kim, Kim, I mean, there's services that do that for a living, they.
Right, well, we have an outside service that does the payroll. I mean, I don't know more outside service that you want, you have to have somebody inside entering into the outside source.
Really, really, really? I mean, in this day and age of fintech, I, I don't know. I, listen, I don't want to have that battle, but I, I believe, I believe that we should take a mission on, you should, Kim, over time, to really take a hard look at what can be automated and outsourced. The idea that we have to process these things ourselves, it just strikes me as a twentieth century concept.
We're not, we're processing minimal now. You're, you're saying that and I'm saying, you know, other than, I'm telling everybody they can pay online, they can do it. We don't have to process the tax bills in the office now. So I guess I'm kind of, you know, getting to the point where I, I get what you're saying. So we are, the, the, the money goes directly to the bank. It doesn't come to car, I opened up in Carlisle and put through, it's open through machines and it goes through so much faster. Those are outside processes. And I will look further into outside process, but I'm asking you to support is I am hitting a wall where there's no more Kim laugh.
Listen, I want to bifurcate, I, I agree, I want to bifurcate the short-term need that you've clearly articulated. I'm okay with it. You know, I got an issue with processes, I said, but let, let me, let me go back to my two issues. So I think in the long term, the first, the second issue, my view that, you know, I think we, we as a select board should take on, and it's not just finance, it's lots of departments where we really have to take a hard look. If we're going to survive as an independent town, we got to be more nimble and creative about automating and outsourcing stuff, because we just do an awful lot of stuff in the old way. That's not particularly a Kim Kane issue, that's a parallel issue. The first issue of process, I'm okay, you had an audience and you gave your pitch, but I would push it back to Tim and the finance committee to vet all that stuff and then come back with a much more narrow saying, Anush needs to do these things and she needs these more hours, you know, and all this other stuff, okay. Let somebody else that's vetting all that, sort that. Because I think if we start down that slippery slope where we're, you know, acknowledging at the select board level that every single department comes in with all their little things, then we'll just, it'll chew up all our time and we're supposed to be an overseeing board. So that, that is my view, admittedly as a rookie in the select board and I may, I'm happy to be correct.
Well, I think you're right, David, and the whole idea of best practices, uh, is something that we need to have a look at. And, and there are probably resources available to do that. The, the MSA, for instance, is one of the, one of the things that, that's one of the things they do. And they can help us with that, but we have to ask them to do it, you're absolutely right. But you're right, and that's, that's a, that's a discussion that is town-wide, not just treasurer or collector. And, uh, and I think, uh, you know, we can do the short-term stuff, uh, as needed. But over, over the long term, we really do need to look at that sort of thing across the board because there are lots of things we're not perhaps very efficient at. And, and, and I think probably, Kim, your department is one of the ones that is, that is, has less of a problem with that than a lot of other places in this town.
If you hire someone and I come in and try to with, you know, with my, with my immediate, you know, group is, is streamline processes and if you can outsource it for a more reasonable thing, those have been some of my, my goals. I just went in front of you because I did, I, Tim knew I was going to the FinCom and I just didn't want to, I asked what the process was and I figured I had to go to personnel, so.
I had, I had the same question that David did and, uh, and got the same answer, so that's okay.
I have another question. It seems to me we're nibbling around the edges. And I'm just wondering, at one point, um, we, um, our treasurer, collector, finance director was, um, kind of grooming and, and the assistant was supposed to be, you know, brought along at, you know, in a succession plan and be able to step into the shoes of the treasurer, collector, finance director, if that person were to be ill or whatever. So I guess one of my questions is, is that still happening? My second question is, would it be, do we need really? I, I like the idea of talking of FTEs and not people, okay? So, um, if we had three FTEs, would it make sense to have, or, you know, would it make sense to have a finance director? Full stop. Treasurer, collector, or, or two people and treasurer, collector, one's the treasurer, one's the, I don't know how you would, you know, divide that up. I mean, i- is that a better, should we be looking to change the whole?
If you truly want to finance, yes, I, I would, I would say that, you know, because as, as a finance director, then all these other things with assessor, accountant, you know, all this, you, you can budget, you can take and, and manage all of that. I wouldn't say you'd have to have a treasurer and a collector. My former town had a treasurer and collector separate, but that, you know, I was more acting as a finance director. So if you had a true finance director, yes, you could have a treasurer, collector in that department. You wouldn't have to have two, a treasurer and a collector. That's where towns get expensive, you know.
Okay, so let's say, we have a, we have a finance director, which is you. And I guess my question is, um, is the, the one point four six or one point six six, it would be then, extra FTE that we have, would that be the equivalent of a treasurer, collector? Would those two, two people that are in those, the point eight six and the point eight, would they be able to become the treasurer, collector?
Um, I, I would say no right now, that's why I have training in there. Um, you know, uh, one is very much on payroll, the other, uh, FTE is only been a few years. So I would, my goal was if COVID hadn't hit and I'd even, I think I put in my, um, narrative to FinCom was that I want, what I want to do is if I can get one of my assistants to start going to some virtual things, because you have to understand mass general law to be a treasurer, collector. So I would, I would say you need a treasurer, collector with those, you know, you really need three people, you know, running, running, you know, that, that office. If you had, if I was only treasurer, collector and do it with the two and not having finance director, yes, I could. You know, that, that office. If you had, if I was only treasurer collector and do it with the two and not having finance director, yes, I could probably. You know, you probably handle, handle that. So, you know, with the, with it, what it is now, you can't do an M B finance director too. There's just too many, um, you know, things that are outside of it, you know, with it. But you would not need a treasurer and a collector.
Okay.
Or if you need a treasurer collector, you could do treasurer finance and put one together and separate the collection and give, you know. Different F T Es that way too.
Cause I think that's another way that we should be thinking about. Organizing efficiently.
Collector and that, and then you have treasure, you know, treasure finance or whichever it is, and you have your payroll person, which is a separate person. Then you'd need somebody within that body to take, you know, on the treasury stuff. So there are different ways. All towns do it differently, but. And it could work this, you just, there's just needs to be more F T Es to, you know. Have an assistant treasurer and an assistant collector and, you know, some, you know, people into it. There's just. And it's not just, I would say the treasurer collector. I also look at, because I was an accountant in doing it too and, you know, with the. Accounting part of it, there's, there's not a lot of, um, even for Priscilla to, to, to delegate work to. And, and have, you know, help to, to, to keep it, you know, ahead, so to speak. If you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's different structures to.
Yeah. So I guess the question is, you know, at a certain point, do we want to be looking at different structures?
Right. We have a true finance director and you have, yeah.
Well, I know, I'm personally glad that we decided to have her come tonight because this, this is always very educational. As well, we had really nothing to do with her request per se, but it has a lot to do with, with our understanding of what you do for a living. And that's important for us.
Well, it, it does because we, we, we find out more what those, you know, extra F T Es are being spent. Where they're, you know, being allocated.
Yep.
Where the resources are being deployed. Okay.
Any further questions for Kim? Hearing none. Uh, thank you, Kim. Appreciate it. Yeah. We, this will, I'm sure this will come back.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks. Take the night off. All right, uh.
Well, we're still early.
We're still early. All right.
Well, even with all that.
All right, let's, uh, let's, I will, I think I'd like to move the, uh, town administrators report up because the other discussion is kind of open-ended. And we'll, we'll see how long that goes, but we can get, uh, get the action items out of the way.
Okay. Uh, the town administrators report, the first item is that, uh. Number of boards have, uh, been asking about possible training from town council with respect to the open meeting law. Particularly in light of, uh, the, you know, a lot of the remote, uh. Meetings that have been going off the past year or so. Also, there's some interest in, uh. Uh, the open meeting, I implement implications rather of, uh, uh, using a shared drive to, you know. Uh, for committees to edit a document, whether or not that presents some problems. I think it does. This council has told me. Long and the short of it is that the town council is happy to provide that training. The timing would be, you know, for the board to decide, uh, they can do that as part of a meeting or we could do that as a one-off on a, a separate, uh. Night. So if you're, if you're amenable to that, I, I can arrange that with Tom Harrington.
I'd vote for a one-off myself.
I agree. I, I don't, I don't think that something can be done as part of a select board meeting and it needs its own forum.
I mean, should, as long as, as long as Tom is willing to do it, shouldn't we? I, I agree it should be separate session, but shouldn't we invite all the boards? I mean.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're the ones that are asking for it.
Yeah. Barney, do you have a question?
Well, no, I was, I was just gonna. Agree. To the boards and committees. It's not geared to us as a select board, although we may benefit from it too.
Is, is, is this something that's? A, a one hour, a three hour? Do you know, uh, have any idea, Tim, what, what would be in?
I think typically it's an hour, hour and a half. I think any longer kind of people.
Okay.
So I should say, you know, um. School committees across the Commonwealth, uh, wrestle with this more maybe specifically than. Any other boards because of the activist parent nature of the things. Um, and the M A S C, the. Massachusetts Association of School Committees has a canned, uh, training, which is very good, actually. So, I mean, that's another option and it's not, I mean, it may be, it may, I haven't looked at it in a while. It may be a little bit school committee oriented, but. I mean, that's another resource that. Could be considered as, they've already done it all. They don't really, it doesn't require much. I mean, if Tom's willing to give a tutorial, that's fine, but if we're going to spend, you know, if he needs to spend a number of hours prepping for that, and I don't think he does.
He doesn't.
We should just bear that in mind that there's a lot of people have already prepared very good presentations on this subject.
I, I think the idea is to have a forum that people can ask, ask individualized questions. And I know a lot of them have been cropping up through the master planning process because of subcommittees to the subcommittees to the subcommittees. And, you know, people couldn't believe that the subcommittee was going to also have to be open, you know, and so I, I think it's just more. To, you know, uh, reassure people and to also reemphasize that everything basically. Is open meeting law and, you know.
Okay.
I think tailing it to our town is, is appropriate and I think, I think Tom could do a great job with that.
Okay.
I, I, I would have a suggestion, Tim, and I'm not, I don't know exactly how you do this, but, um. If there's a way to have Tom give a very short, you know, kind of overview. And then as Kate's saying, leave time for questions and answers, but also to try to solicit some of the specific questions ahead of time. I just, you know, I think we want to make it as meaningful as possible for the people that do have questions. And so rather than, I don't know, I'm guessing he has, you know, probably some prepared remarks that he's given to others before. But if we could, you know, narrow, zero in on what is particularly. Um, on people's minds, you know, in these boards and committees, um, on these boards and committees, that would be. Make it, I think, a more productive time.
Yeah, and I, I'm going to think, say also, I, I imagine that a lot of the questions will revolve around zooming. And, you know, we, we learned late in the game that, for instance, we're supposed to, you know, put, change our names on the, you know, I really more clearly identify ourselves. That we're supposed to do a roll call, that was what, you know, things like that as part of the open meeting law and that, you know. Those rules about having to be able to be seen and heard and all this other stuff. So, um. That would be something updated, you know, open meeting law rules.
You mean updated for the Zoom life?
For the Zoom life, right.
I, I agree with you.
Yeah, which I would have gone on forever.
Yes.
You can wear your P J bottoms and still be in.
You know, that's a, a broad question would be.
Tattled.
To get, um, Tom's take on it, whether he's heard anything about. Is, is the state likely to, you know, in the long run? Make it possible, make it legal, whatever, to have Zoom meetings continue as a, as a, as deliberative bodies. Because I think for a lot of people, they've proved to be, you know, a really good means for getting together and, and a lot more. Um, efficient and enjoyable frankly, than having to get in your car and try to go into somebody's office or whatever. So. That's just a general question.
There, there is, I, the MMA last week did talk about that there's discussions at the state level about. You know, hybrid, new hybridizing things and, and, and I believe there's also some discussion at the state level. Um, for, uh, open, for the, um, town. Town meetings as well, but I, you know, nothing's come up yet.
Yeah, I mean, you could more broadly ask that question of, you know, corporate life, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, it's been, then those corporates, a lot of the corporations have already made that decision.
Right. So I think, I think it's the timing. I mean, I can't, I agree with what I've heard. I can't see it going back to the old way. Now maybe retract a little bit. This is the way it will go.
All right. So I guess, Tim, uh, you'll.
Okay.
Ask Tom to, what's good for him and we'll schedule it.
We'll schedule something with Tom and to Barney's suggestion, when we invite the boards and committees, we'll ask them to submit. Questions or topics in advance so that Tom can have some time to work on that and have some answers for them.
Absolutely.
Okay. The second item, uh, was with respect to the Carlisle Veterans Committee. There's been some interest in, in kind of reconstituting that committee. It was quite active a few years ago. Uh, kind of not so active in recent years. Uh, Chris Eisenbees, uh, is offering to continue as a member of the Veterans Committee. And also take responsibility for maintaining the Veterans Honor Roll, a list that, uh. Is read at Memorial Veterans Day, uh, observances, uh, and, and as you know, periodically refurbish the. The plaques on the monuments that, uh, on the common, uh, it's not possible to do it every time we have a name or two added. We have to wait till we have a, a handful of names to do it every five or so years. So, uh. I think it, it's a good opportunity to put the word out through the mosquito or, and other, uh, you know, venues to that, uh. The town is looking for, uh, veterans or perhaps, uh, non-veterans with an interest in veterans, uh. Affairs to be part of the Carlisle Veterans Committee. We've, I think we've got two members, uh, currently, but, uh, always looking, uh. Looking for more.
I agree.
Good idea. Yep.
Okay. Well. To that, uh, third item, uh, there's an email from Phil Drew of the Historical Society. They've been gifted three display cases from the Concord Historical Society and they have a use for two of them. He's asking if, uh, the town, uh, or the select board, uh, would have a possible spot for it at town hall. I said I would have, ask, uh, the board, bring it to you. Space is of course the issue. It's a generous offer, but, uh. Yeah, we'd have to decide what, uh. Where we could, uh, put it in town hall and, and, you know, they'd be responsible for, uh, kind of rotating, uh, display of, uh. Historical items and artifacts, uh, they'll, they'll handle that. We just need to have a location for this, uh. Uh, display case in the future. So.
Could it be, could it be at the school?
I was just going to ask the same question. That was one big question. I think it's a great thing for the school if they would take it, uh, cause.
Is it, is it empty display cases or there are things in it we have to show?
I think they're, they're empty at the moment.
Yeah, currently, but they would.
The Historical Society would keep it maintained and provide items.
It would do a rotating display in it.
Yeah, either, either, either the school or the library. Yeah.
You know, we have.
We didn't have, I mean, I think town hall is good if we got room for it, but if, if it's going to be an issue, uh, I think there are, there are other options.
Yeah, I'd say, Tim, if you, if you know what the dimensions are. See how big.
It's, it's two by six.
Two by six. I was trying to think, is that little, you, you know, there's the doorway, the double door. And there are those two little tongues that come out. Are those six feet wide? Cause you could put one at the end, but then that might be guessed a window and that might not be good for the display. So. Otherwise, that's the only place I can think of in the town hall.
I can, I can give Jim O'Shea a call and see if there's potentially some space at the school.
Yeah, library at the school or it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the halls.
Yeah, no, I, I, we'll run that. I mean, it would, you know, be ashamed to would not use it. We'll, we'll find a space for it. But you, you support the idea of, of it being somewhere, right?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
All right.
It shouldn't go to the swap shed.
Too much, too much glass. All right.
I have another little item that I, I am, uh, asking for your forbearance to allow me to bring up during.
That's right.
Word if that's okay. It's, uh, regarding the cheer project. Um. I think I mentioned a while back that we are, um, organizing a, uh. And it's sort of a week-long event that we're calling, uh, Nature Art with Scrappy. Scrappy being a. Compostable, uh, mascot kind of figure that Allison Sailor has put together and it's really just fabulous. She's made a big cardboard cutout of this little guy and the idea is to encourage people to, um. Create some kind of art out of, uh, natural materials, um, whether it's things they find in nature or compostable materials. And create some kind of a piece of art and we put them, we, the week, the school vacation week, which begins with Valentine's Day. And runs through the twenty-first would be the designated time period for anybody in town that wanted to create something. Um, to put it out on display and our, our current, uh, preference would be to. Have it go, um, on the Conant Land Trail, um, particularly sort of aiming to have the. First little meadow area where, um. The Vivian Chaput monument is that starting there and then running down past the pond. Um, would be kind of the designated area. Um, and so I wanted to get. And, and let me just add that, um, at the end of the period, um, the, um, cheer team. And probably some helpers will go out and collect everything that hasn't, you know, decomposed or that can't be tossed back in the woods. Like pine cones and leaves, et cetera. So we'll clean anything up that needs to be cleaned up afterwards. And I did check in with the trails committee and they think that's a great idea. Um, and so I wanted to get. The, um, support of the board for the use of the Conant Land for this purpose.
Here, here.
Yeah. Any, any, uh, um, anybody not for it? Put it that way. Okay. I think the sense of the, the board is, yes, go right ahead.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah. And I've noticed, you know, I would, I've been walking the trails a fair amount lately and I did, did those little painted rocks. All over the place, which is kind of nice, uh, with little messages on them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can thank my kids for those.
Oh, really? Ah, very good.
And lots of others, lots of.
Yeah.
I think there's lots of people been doing it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Fair amount of them when they got bored in the summertime. I don't know who came up with that. I mean, do you know who came up with the painted rock project? Okay.
Yep, yep. I keep discovering new ones.
Well, you know, I have to say, I mean, this is, I don't know, you guys probably covered this years ago, but, um, uh. What's your name at, uh, Carlisle School, the art teacher? What's your name?
Oh, Rachel Levy.
Well, yeah, Rachel did a great job. I mean, those signs, those trail signs are just extraordinary with those.
Yeah.
Uh, the kids is just awesome. I love it.
Okay, uh. And of course, the, uh, meeting schedule is.
Meeting schedule and, uh. I've got to work with Alan on, uh, filling out the agendas for those meetings, but those are the next three on the schedule. Then we're going to have the finance committee back at, uh, uh, some point to talk about their preliminary budget, uh, discussions with departments and. Uh, I don't know if that'll be February twenty-third, but, uh, uh, it'll be one of those three meetings, I think.
Very good.
Uh, yeah.
And I'd like to, one of the other things that, uh, as we're looking at meetings, uh, we've talked about it elsewhere. Uh, the whole idea of when to hold the, uh, election and town meeting. And it's something, and maybe we can talk about that as part of our planning, uh, issue. But it's, uh, something that, that we probably ought to be making a decision on reasonably soon. Uh, so that we can, uh, get that on the calendar.
Yeah. I agree.
Yeah.
Concord has theirs already set, I think, uh, somebody said today.
Thirteenth, I think.
June thirteenth, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Do I recall somebody saying, or did I make this up, that Wayne has already been consulted and he's fine with doing it in June?
He is, he is. I'll circulate it. He sent me back an email a while ago and he, he thinks that's a great idea and he's got. Got some good reasons why we'd want to do it in June. I'll, I'll send that to the board.
Yeah. Well, why don't we put that on the February ninth agenda to make, unless, unless there's some other information we need before then to make a.
Well, the other information we need and I, I'll, I have some of it is that the last day of school is going to be the eighteenth of June. The nineteenth is Juneteenth and I don't think that would be a good day to take, to use. Um, the twelfth, um. A, a, and the twentieth and fifteenth, there was Father's Day is the twentieth and last year I know we tried to avoid that. Um, the twelfth, the weekend of the twelfth, um, the Carlisle, um, garden tour is taking place. So I don't know if that's, if we want to over. So I don't know if that's, if we want to overlap with that or not, so. That pushes it back one more week to the 5th if we're doing it a weekend, unless we do it on a Sunday as Concord did.
Well, let's look at the options.
Yeah, but we can put it up, I'll put the discussion on the, on the February 9th agenda.
Yeah, but those, those are just things that we want to keep in mind.
Can I, this is kind of an odd question to ask because I can't be very specific, obviously, but. There are two different topics that I would like us to discuss and I really think they need to be done in an executive session. So how, how does the decision get made to do something in executive session? When, you know, I can't really, I don't really want to say here. And maybe that's something Alan, I just talked to you offline and you make the decision with Tim about.
Yeah, I mean, the thing, executive sessions have to be for specific purposes.
You have to say, you have to state, you don't, I mean, I think you're, first of all, that's why you have to go to Tom Harrington's. You probably, yes, you should go to the chair, you know, and. You want to cover anyway, but when you decide to have executive.
Specific topics and I'll, I'll, Alan, I'll talk to you about it and.
Okay, very good, yeah.
Thank you.
I may have to get advice too, we'll go from there, yeah. Alrighty, okay, anything else, Tim?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you, alright.
Sorry to interrupt, but Tim, did, do you want to say anything about the. The follow-up session with the department heads, have you got that scheduled with?
With Mark?
Mark, yeah.
I don't get it, have the date nailed down. Gonna talk to him tomorrow morning, well, we all are, but yeah. It'll be next month, but I don't have this specific date.
Alright, long-term priority, it's not just budget priorities, but just long-term priorities discussion. One of which is budget, but it's, it includes all kinds of other things. And again, I, I really set this list out. To get your input on with, on scheduling these, that I think we ought to devote time in our meetings. To looking at these kind of things because I think they're important, just as best practices, we talked about earlier. Something that we really ought to be addressing, it's just a matter of finding the time to do it and, and scheduling a time to do it. And so I really wanted to put, put these out there, I'm not sure the, the list was just something that I came, came in the top of my head, I didn't really. Have, have anything particular in mind, other than these are things which I think. Require in-depth discussion and a fair amount of lead time in order to do something about it. Certainly things like zoning, town growth, what, you know, those kinds of things. And to get it out there so that people can start thinking about it as well, this, I mean, it comes up at town meeting. And we really ought to have. A really a town-wide discussion about these important issues. And I did see, I mean, I had taxes and debt as one of my issues and I see the. Finance Committee wants to talk about that when they meet with us next time also, so I think that's a, that's a pretty good one. As to what, should, should we have a debt policy? But. Obviously, Kate's favorite topic, physical facilities. And actually, that came up today as well, in terms of the public safety building, just to, which, which is. Sitting out there without any real plan or without even a real proposal, other than the two chiefs saying we think we ought to. Look at this as a real option, but we haven't taken any option and we haven't really had a proposal put for us, before us. And I'm not sure that these are all things that have to be done by the select board, I think, but they're things that we at least ought to be directing other people to do. Where it's appropriate. So I'll open it up for now and get, get your input, whether this is, this is a good idea, bad idea. And if it's a good idea, how we might go about doing it.
Which idea are we talking about?
But about having. Time devoted to looking at the, the long-term priorities of the town. Well, that was my feeling.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm just gonna say, I think that. Really worthwhile to try to tackle some of these topics and that. One of the things that I think we would really benefit from as a board is having more of a shared. Set of priorities and now we, you know, went through our own process to determine some very specific. You know, objectives that sort of between now and the end of this fiscal year, but this is, I think you're raising Alan some really good. Topics for looking at, you know, longer term questions about the town and. So I would definitely support making time, setting aside time and maybe we just. Regularly at every meeting where we can at least set aside a portion of the time to engage in those, you know, higher level discussions. I think it would be worthwhile to, if, if we were gonna do them as a board. Or maybe have one of us be the kind of point person for framing the conversation. I mean, I think if we just said, yeah, we're gonna discuss public facilities and then we all show up at the next select board meeting and, and. And we just kind of start throwing out, you know, what we think or, you know, we could end up. Anyway, I'm not sure it would be as, as productive as sort of a more. Yes, you want to have the broad discussion, but maybe having some. You know, leading questions or.
And, and data collection, you know, in many cases, I mean, as, as we did this evening. Where we looked around at comparables, you know, we have towns all around us that are not very dissimilar from us. Who may do things very different from us, I can think, I know, I mean, I know one offhand, Boxborough. That's very much a town like us, but they're organized very differently than we are. And even in things like the land use boards and that sort of thing and the, and the Board of Health, I mean, they're, they've, they've. Have a completely different system than we do and they take advantage of, of regionalization to solve some of their problems. And it's, and in many cases, it's been worked very, very well for them, so I think, I mean, I think those kind of things. Go out there and see, okay, how, you know, if we're gonna look at zoning, if we're gonna look at growth. Housing, how, what are the other towns doing, and I know on the Affordable Housing Trust, we did look at some of that, we looked at the Andover. System, for instance, for meeting their affordable housing needs and they have a very unique system for doing so, which is very good. Whether it's applicable to us is something we, we need to address, but it's, but there are examples out there. That if we, you know, gather our data before we discuss it and come in with, okay, well, here's how these people do it. And I think this is a really, really good idea, then we can take potshots at it. But it's, it's the, it's the kind of thing that I think, you're right Barney, I mean, I think we should, we shouldn't just go at this with, okay, well, tonight we'll discuss housing. I like big houses, you like little houses, I like green houses, you like blue houses. We need to, we need to have some idea of what the options are and we often get those ideas from looking what other people have done. And it, you know, which means we're probably not ready tonight to discuss any of these in any kind of depth, but.
Well, but I think tonight what we could do is look at the, the kind of broad headings. And say, you know, maybe prioritize, say, what do we want to tackle first? You know. I mean, I'm tempted to do them all at the same time.
I mean, before we, yeah, be, be, before we prioritize what's on the list, I think. You know, I think we should frame out some broad comments, so. I mean, the first thing is, where's the master plan in all this, because a lot of this data gathering prioritization. Figure out what the town wants, I thought that was the, what the master plan was supposed to do.
Yeah, but it didn't. All they did is look at what we're doing, they didn't look at what anybody else is doing.
Well.
Although that is, you know, that is, we do have a little bit of that, Alan, and that is what's part of the. The, the next, I would say, four or five months now, that. The additional research and analysis, including best practices from other communities. Is on the agenda and. It's, it may not be going into as much depth as we might want. If we're, if we're getting down to the level of, you know, how is the Town Hall set up in terms of how they do their different functions? That's not going to come from the master.
No, but, but Barney, I, I mean, yes, of course, but you start, you always should start from the bigger view down, right? So I guess that's really the, that's the fisher cut bait question is, are we gonna wait around for master plan to sort of give us the general. Sense of what the town feels or it's, when, when we talk about the big picture things like. You know, do we want to be more rural or do we want to have more development, do we want lower taxes or are we comfortable with higher taxes, you know? Da, 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 if we, if we're in these big picture items, are we gonna wait for input from master plan or are we giving up and we're gonna do it our own? I mean, we should just decide that.
We're not giving it up, I mean, if we.
Well, we as in Barney Arnold's not giving up, but it's.
No, it's the select board, I want to say, we, you know, the town authorized $160,000 two years ago. And we've spent, you know, whatever that is, like 65,000 of it. And we don't want to just dribble that money away and there's been a lot of good, solid work done. Now, I know you have not experienced it yet, and so maybe.
I'm not adversarial to it, it's a question of when.
The win is to have a final report done by next, by this, keep forgetting it's 21, by this fall.
I mean, I guess I turn back to Alan and Kate, I don't care, but I don't want to reinvent the wheel, I don't want to duplicate efforts, but I also don't want to. Wait around for something that might or might not happen, so I gotta ask the other members of the select board, you know, are we comfortable sort of. Cause to really do it right, you want to get that input, as you said, Alan, with data. And then progress from there, is, are we comfortable with that timetable?
I don't think it has to be an either or, because for instance, the question of a public facility, a joint public facility. I think we know that we need to address that as a town, as the select.
Barney, I disagree, I mean, I, I, I agree that there's a need for it, but there's also a need for a council on aging, maybe senior center, community center. I can't possibly prioritize those things without input, if I thought, you know, I mean, a year ago or maybe a year and a half ago, whatever it was. You know, I was optimistic that the master planning process, because of these kitchen table conversations and all these things, which I felt were great. Was gonna get us an answer, at least, you know, at the general level of what the taxpayers of the town think is important. And we serve those taxpayers, I can't possibly make a decision. I believe that, you know, we have one major capital building project ahead of us in the short term. And I don't, I can't possibly tell you whether it's a public safety building or a community center at this moment. And I'm disappointed frankly that I don't yet know that from the master planning, it's not even on the master planning's like radar. That to me is a basic thing.
I'll let somebody else speak at this point. I mean, I, I, we can talk more about it, David, offline if you want, but anyway, you know.
All I mean to say, I don't, I'm coming across as too critical, but what I'm saying is. If we embrace as a select board that we have certain mission to prioritize these budget priorities, and I think we do. We've got to identify whether we're gonna wait for input from this other parallel process or are we gonna forge ahead? I don't think we can say, well, master plan's doing A, B, and C and we'll do DEF, I just don't believe that, I think you have to start. With the whole prioritization and then you figure out what your priorities are and you drill down. And I'm fine doing it alone and I'm fine waiting for master plan, I really don't care, but I don't think you can say, this runs in parallel and we do our own thing. I think that's ineffective.
Well, I think there are some things, I mean, it would be nice to know and I, and I, and I'm not familiar enough with what's the master planning. Group has been doing in the last several months, but the, if there are, if there are areas that they're just not even gonna touch. We could address those, I, I don't, I, I don't think there's any, any benefit in running in parallel. With looking at exactly the same issues, I think.
Pointing, but Alan, you, you and your own little list and I'm not, it's not a comprehensive list, it doesn't have schools, it doesn't have security on it, but. But that list, the pieces, and I don't mean the physical plant, because that's relatively straightforward. But the big picture items on that list, taxes, zoning, housing, growth. Those are huge strategic issues and I gotta ask again, what piece of that is master planning taking on? I thought that's what they are.
Yeah, well, I just asked the question from the other way around, which, which of those aren't they taking on?
I, I would say they are not taking taxes for sure. Because I think, well, I'll let Barney go ahead and, you know.
Well, I think they'll, they'll take on taxes from the standpoint of saying. Here would, here, you know, if we use this as a rough estimate of what it would cost to build a. Community center, this would be the impact on taxes roughly, in very broad, rough terms, but. I'm not sure what, what that.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, you know, I, I, I keep sounding critical, but. We don't need the master planning committee to tell us what a capital expenditure of X will result in Y taxes, Kimberly can do that in her sleep.
No, 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 but David, the reason we're doing this is because you're, it's, it's, who, who are we trying to represent? We're not just representing our own opinions, right, we're trying to figure out what do people in town think.
That's exactly right, and that's why the master planning process.
Let me finish.
Valuable.
David, hang on, just let me finish, yeah, so when I, when I mention that as an example, it is because people in town, the average person. Needs to have some of that data to make, give an opinion about whether or not they would support it. And so one of the things that's gonna be, that is being planned by the master plan is to take. Some of the possible scenarios for the directions the town could go. And, and be able to private, provide enough information about what that involves. That when you send out a survey or when you hold another set of kitchen conversations. The people in those or the people answering the survey can give a real opinion about whether or not they support it.
Yeah, no, okay, I agree with that, but so again, I, I get back to, I don't see Alan. I don't see anything on your list that the master planning committee shouldn't, let me say differently. The master planning committee or the master planning mission to me should be to give a general sense of the priorities of those. Items on that list to help guide us in framing the priorities of the things we do. We can certainly, and we are, take on things like streamline land use boards, make it more efficient. We can do the make-by decisions, we were talking to Kimberly about earlier, you know, examine departments, see what's outsourcing will give us, blah, blah, blah. We can do that anyway and that's fine, we should do it, but it's not big picture, if we're really big picture. We've got to dovetail, we either have to dovetail with the master planning process or we have to decide that. For whatever reason, the master planning process is either too slow or not right or whatever and forge our own way, I don't see a middle ground.
I don't either, but I, but that isn't really what I had in mind in the first place. It's not a question of whether we build a public safety building or a new town hall or a new school. Or a new community center, the question is, we know we're going to have these needs in the future. We know we're going to have major capital expenses coming up, whether it's this year, next year, the year after that, something's gonna burn down or something's gonna fall down or. You know, something's gonna happen, but my question is, how do we plan so that we can do these things? That's my approach to this.
Okay, no, no, I like that. Okay, no, no, I like that. So let's, let's, let's explore that. So, so when I was. Uh, you know, finance chief way back in the old days. I would always say to people, you know. And Kate's heard me say this. Grade schools. Rural character, low taxes. Pick two of three and tell me which two you want. Because you can't have all three. And you could expand that to say, you know, public services or whatever. The point is that. We do need even to have what you're talking about. In order, we can certainly from a process standpoint, again, and I think it is a good idea. Come up with guidelines of how much debt we think we can incur. You know, what is the appetite for taxes? We can, we can. Identify the four corners of the playing field. To help frame future decisions. But until we really understand what the sentiment of the general public is for those things. It's very hard. It's very hard to prioritize. I, I give you, you know, I'll give you just a near term example. I mean, schools is going to come in with a seven and a half percent ask. On its budget. Now, there's a lot of reasons for that. And they're probably justifiable. But again, you, you're talking, and I'm, and I'm a school defendant. But you're talking about a population of 600 students, which means. You know, broadly speaking, at the most 1,200 parents, probably 1,000 parents. Out of 5,000 taxpayers. And it's soaking up, you know, half the town's budget. I mean, that's a legitimate question of. What's the priority of that compared with the growing segment of seniors? Who really have a very light, you know, constituent advocacy. I'm not putting a value judgment on that discussion. But that is a very important strategic discussion that you can't really have until you have the input of the population and hence.
But you can, but you can say, how have other towns? Handle that who don't have our taxes.
Yep.
Have good schools. Are, have the same population. And, and there are answers out there.
Right, and we should do that, that we should do every day of the week. Every day of the week, school board, and they do. Should be looking at comparables and trying to come up with innovative strategies, and FinCom should push them to do that. But the general sense of where that budget, the John Ballantyne sense of where the budget is going versus the. You know, demographic versus the tax base, blah, 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 long term. Long term is not about what the comparables do. It's about how we prioritize our life here in Carlisle. Acknowledging that there are certain costs to that. So. You know, schools can, they can cut a few hundred thousand dollars by being creative. But they're not going to cut a few million dollars.
I understand, but, but as town leaders. I think we have an obligation. To. Say, okay, yes, you know, you can't, you can't have. A town full of cows and a marble school. And, you know, nine fire trucks. So. How do we, how do we? Balance those needs? With solutions? And as town leaders, we have, we may have to say, okay, we can, we cannot stay rural. In the, in the absolute sense of the word, that is, have only one store. And. Keep, keep taxes so people can afford to live here. Okay? And if you, if you want these other things, which by the way, we're going to have to have at some point.
Well, but again, I think it's, I. I also want to, going back to schools, just briefly. You know, our school is rated, what, number one in the state? Is a good school. Could, could the school still be a good school if it's rated number eight? In the state?
Sure. And if you have seven other towns, we are number eight.
Kate, back to my point.
Yeah.
You know, whether we're one or eight or 12, you know, in the top 25. The cost of it is about the same.
Right.
It's not, you're not going to suddenly save some money because you decided to be number eight. The cost of running a. High performing, top notch school in, in the 21st century is, there's a certain tag to that. So. I, I still, I agree with everything I've heard, but I, I say, we as a select board, I. I think we should first decide whether we want to wait. Or accelerate the master plan process. And I agree, it's, it's spent money, it's been thoughtful and all these things. There's been some bumps in the road. Okay, fine, everybody has that. You know, we can wait. I mean, this is not like a burning problem. It's a problem that we need to address. We can wait till September, whenever we can push this master plan to accelerate and get us some data in the summer. You know, but, but I think to ignore it and just forge ahead, I just, it just seems wrong to me. It seems strategically wrong to me.
Okay.
Well, and unfortunately though, there is some, there are pressures. I mean. There, there is a pressure to build this. Public safety building. I'm not, and, you know, I'm not sure. How to deal with it. Because that, you know, that is tied up with the long, with the master plan. But, you know.
Can the, can the master plan finish up by the summer, at least get some point? Again, I always say to everybody, you know, works for me, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good. Can we get some, you know, headway onto this thing by? June 30. It's not going to be a this town meeting issue anyway, right? So. We're not going to authorize a building despite what Chief Fisher might want, you know, for this town meeting. So. We've got some near term issues that are COVID related and other budget and blah, blah, blah. So we can get all that stuff done, you know, in time for town meeting. And we have the summer, and I've always been a believer, as you guys know, of. Taking a breath in the summer and maybe really tackling some of these more difficult issues without the calendar pressure. Is there a way we could get, you know, master plan to come up with a set of recommended preliminary recommendations by June 30? Give us a chance to chew on that and start overlaying that into this other stuff. I don't expect an answer tonight, but if you could carry that back to master plan, Barney, I would be very happy.
Well, I'm, I'm there too. I'm on the.
You too. Okay, all right.
I'm doing the housing and I'm feeling a little overwhelmed by it, to tell you the truth.
Well, and housing, by the way, thank you for bringing that up. I mean. You know, we're toiling, we're toiling in the, in the fields of housing and. Fortunately, Dr. Lewis doesn't have to do it, which is great reason to be a chair. Select board, in my opinion, but. You know, we're there on these meetings and. And, you know, I got, I got some bad press because I said, you know, we're in a leadless town and I was taken out of context, but what I meant. Was that, you know, it's a, what's Kioti, Quixotean? Is that what they say?
Quixotic?
Quixotic, thank you. It's a quixotic quest. For a town like ours to try to reach, you know, a 10% goal, in my opinion. And therefore, if you're not going to reach a 10% goal. You should think strategically about what are your objectives to affordable housing? And I think we got to a good place, but. We are fooling ourselves if. We don't, you know, consider whether we want to be a high growth or a low growth town, affordable or not affordable. So. They're all inextricably linked, linked. I, I can't see. Making headway till we really understand what do people want.
Yeah. We will have a good sense of that by the end of June.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, one thing they want is they want lower taxes.
You know, if that's the most important, if that clearly becomes the most important. Then that triggers a whole bunch of decisions. That means you don't really pursue. A public safety, you know, you really have to look harder whether you patch up the old. Right? What's the New England expression is, you know, use it up, wear it out. Fix it up or do without, right? I mean, if we live by that credo, there's a whole bunch of decisions that are made. And that's just one example.
I, I don't think we know that, Kate. I, I think that. There is certainly, well, I, I think at this point, a lot of this is anecdotal, right? It's, it's not really. Hasn't been data, it's not supported yet by data.
Well.
And we'll get that from survey and.
Actually, the 2009. One.
Yes.
Was excellent because it was totally data driven, and I don't think things have really changed much on the ground. And it's, it's like the seventh, you know, the seven blind men and the elephant? So. If you talk to the elder people, they want the taxes to go down because now they're on fixed income and the taxes are going up and their income isn't. And so they're starting to feel, you know, insecure and they're, even though they could take that money, you know, sell that house and take that money to the bank. They don't feel that that's what they want to do, you know? Who said that they, you know, that doesn't really help them? And then there's the younger people who are making a lot more because they had to make more to buy the house or their house for. We don't know, but anyway, the two income and they're, you know, a different. They're different from the people who moved in in the 50s and 60s, you know, that just is too different. Depends upon where you put your dipstick in, how, how deep that oil is going to be.
Yeah, but you know, even that picture, you said it's not different than 2009, and I would. Counter, it is different than 2009, and it's changing rapidly and COVID is helping it change because. You know, we're suddenly a hot real estate market, and I don't think it's. Elders buying houses in Carlisle that's driving that market, right? It's the other way. So.
Yeah.
You know, we, again, I. I think we're smart enough and all of us collectively represent enough years in Carlisle and enough knowledge to. Have a reasonable and very, you know, thoughtful and. And stepwise sort of debate on the topic. And it would be great to have the advantage of. The data and the thoughtfulness that the master planning process has undertaken in the last two years. So if, if the. If you guys can come back and tell us, yes, there will be a deliverable honor about the end of June. I am personally happy to wait till then and make it a real priority. For us to tackle this. I think it's absolutely a critical priority, and I, I'm glad it's on the agenda.
Well, no more once we get, we're supposed to get a consultant.
Do it the right way. Let's just do it the right way.
Yeah.
Okay, otherwise though, under some of those, well, when, when. Alan first sent that list around, I embroidered on it. And so for instance, on physical facilities. I thought, well, we could talk about the townwide facilities department. And a maintenance policy of, you know, allocating a certain percentage of the facility value. Every year towards its maintenance. We could, for taxes, I thought we could talk about elderly deferral. Or real estate transfer tax. Zoning, well, I have, you know, what's happening with the master plan process? How involved should we be and how long can or should we wait? And. And infrastructure. So, you know, a lot of the zoning will depend upon if we wanted a spring for sewage treatment or town water supply. But I guess some of those things will be coming out of. The master planning.
Yeah, but that's, see, you're talking tactics. I, I meant strategy.
I agree with that.
Okay, all right.
And so from the tactical stand, I agree with Alan, is. There's things we're, as I said, there's things we're doing now that we, we should always do the following thing. We should try to be as efficient as we can with our resources. We should be as innovative as we can. We should definitely look to comparables for examples of how to do it.
Yes.
And we should always make, make by decisions about things that are not core strategic to us. We should always look at that. And so I didn't think we are, you know, we are, we're doing this goal setting, we're doing this. You know, land use consolidation, we're looking at technology, we're addressing, you know, all those tactical things, I think. We can and should do, and we should have good, you know, human resource practices, all those things. But eventually we come up against these really big picture items. And you mentioned one, Kate, which is. You know, if you go to more density, you're going to need water. Like real, and like, that's like a big. You know. It's like Los Angeles and, you know, Chinatown times, right? I mean, water is the key thing, right?
I grew up in Los Angeles and Chinatown times.
Okay, so we don't mess with water. We just don't mess with water.
But if you went to, but if you, for instance, if you went to one acre zoning. Cut the land cost in half.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
You could, you could, you could do that.
Well, actually even better than that, and, and this is something that Adley Grady keeps on bringing up. Instead of thinking of house per acre, we should think of bedrooms. Per acre because she was saying, I have, you know, this, my, my. Herself, her husband and one kid in a four bedroom house with a six bedroom septic. Well, basically, they should be, we should be talking about. Bedrooms rather than houses that you, that if they have a six bedroom septic on that. That lot, they should be able to have three two bedroom houses on there. And that would.
Kate, if they want to, if, if, if the one child couple has a six bedroom house, but. Are they, do they have a water footprint than the two, two kids in a little house? They don't.
They have a four bedroom house with a six bedroom septic.
Right, but if they only use three of those bedrooms. And some little house with a four bedroom and a four bedroom septic uses. Four bedrooms or bathrooms or whatever, aren't they using more water?
No, the, 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 the point is that if the land can, can tolerate and, you know, support. A six bedroom septic system, it should be able to support. The individuals in those bedrooms or, you know, enough houses, you know. Instead of one house with a one six. Six bedroom septic, why can't you have three houses with one six? Bedroom sep- septic, you know, I, I.
Right, there, they, there's enough water there.
There's enough water and there's enough room for the septic.
If they were all two bedroom.
But you only have one house, so, and that's one way of densifying without spreading that.
Right.
That out.
Right.
Because that's what eats up, frankly, one house per two acres. Is, is. Not rural. Rural areas, if you go all through Europe, the way they keep their rural areas is by. You know, squishing all the houses together and leaving all the spaces open, not, you know, by spreading it out every two acres.
Yeah, and it solves your tax problem.
And it solves your tax problem because now those two acres are giving you three households to pay taxes.
And, and you, and they're paying one third.
Yeah, yeah, slowing, slowing the individuals path. And frankly, because we have such. Low capacity in our schools right now, the, you know, depends upon how they fall, obviously, but. We have some capacity without expanding the expense of the school to put more kids in that school.
And I agree with. I agree with that. I don't know where the, I mean, it would really be a good study. Ask poor Jeff Bram, I don't say poor Jeff Bram because I disagree with what you did. Ask him about. You know. How, how many houses can you put on a water table, right?
Right.
I mean, you know, it's not an obvious answer to me that suddenly you can go to an acre. I don't know that.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of towns do.
Yeah, I'd rather not do that. That would really densify everything. I'd rather put. You know. Leave what's open, open.
I'm, I'm not suggesting you put a house on every acre of Carlisle.
I know, I understand. In fact, you couldn't even, you couldn't even do that with my lot because I have an acre of wet.
We have a nimby in our group.
Yeah, and your, and your cable lies on the ground.
Yeah. Yeah.
You'll know. You're going to find a lot of blue salamanders and a lot of ancient Indian heads.
All right, well, I guess we, we've deferred this issue for a bit anyway until, till the summer, so.
Well, the action, yeah, I, I, I liked the discussion and I just reiterate. Since Kate and Barney are representing the master plan. If, if the urgency could be conveyed to master planning committee to get us some. We want to embrace it. I mean, my view is, I don't want to speak for the board. For me personally, I would like to embrace the master planning process. I would like. Useful, useful conclusions to come from that. I just. Request that it be. In a timely as possible fashion because the calendar. The nature of the beast is we get caught up in tactical issues, you know, in the run up to town meeting, and we have more. Mental. Room to deliberate, you know, when that's over. Let's just put it that way.
Yep. Alrighty.
Let me just, a couple, two follow up things. One is. Would it be of interest to the other three members of the board? Luke's not here, but. To have Jack Trost and Jan Corneal come to a select board meeting. They're the two. Jack's the current chair, the new chair of the master plan steering committee.
Or maybe Stacy.
Yeah, or maybe Jack and Stacy. Yeah, would you?
Yeah, I think an up, an update would be wonderful, very informative.
Okay.
And we will, we will make. Room on whatever agenda they can come to.
Okay, I will take responsibility for reaching out to Jack and Stacy, and then Tim, I'll work out with you. You know, what date makes sense.
Barney, you, okay, you were not, it was Mary Lynn that was at, last night at the planning board. So I think. That I thought that that presentation went rather, rather well, the.
Oh, good.
The plan committee or some elements of it went to the planning board. And they had some, because they, I think they're also, you know, kind of. Some, because they, I think they're also, you know, kind of anting about, you know, getting this going and underway and everything else and. So they, we we gave them a presentation about what what sort of ideas we're thinking about. And I think it was well received.
We got the thumbs up from Mary Lynn.
Mary Lynn, actually, Mary Lynn was one of the ones that was in the hot seat last night, so.
Yeah. I did three, they've they've got three new accessory apartments approved, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, my other point was. It's not really exactly the same, but it does feel to me, I I wonder if we should as a board. And and I'm not sure what order, when we do this, is it after the FinCom presents, you know, their preliminary. You know. Budget guidelines or, but somewhere in there, I think we need to have a discussion about our priorities. That we want to have reflected in the proposed. FY twenty two budget. Right, what, and so, and and I think it starts with kind of a broader discussion or what what do we think currently? The needs are. And what what are the priorities among those needs? So I I again, I'd be interested in your thoughts about how we would, when and. How we have that conversation, so so instead of having the budget this come to us and we start. Zeroing in on the specific proposals, you know, or the specific potential warrant articles, before we do that, we have a broad. Of of what we think the the key things are that should be reflected in the budget, I mean, particularly for any new spending.
Yeah, I I mean, I I can't disagree with that at all, but the 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 key is, we we have to do that. At the same time, we have to talk about the resources required to do it, I mean, to have to have priorities without addressing the resource issue is. Is fruitless.
Actually, Tim, you're gonna be there tomorrow, presenting town hall budget, how is that looking? What are we gonna have in that?
You're muted. He's muted on purpose, I think.
Well, I I I am proposing that. We look at some additional positions in town, you know. Help for the town accountant's office, frankly, help for. The selectman's office, I think we need a dedicated HR position. At some point. In the future, so I've got, I've got proposals for that, this may not be the year that such things get funded, but I think they should be on the table. And I think I've talked before about succession planning, I think. We haven't done a lot in that area, but you're within the next three to five years, I can think of five or six department heads that are gonna be. Elsewhere, so we need to, you know, put a plan in place at the very least. Or recognize that that's going to happen and it's going to change what we do business, so. That's that's some of what I'm gonna talk with the FinCom about tomorrow, I think.
And is there an IT position in there too?
Well, there is, Alan and I are are still working on the job description that.
Okay. That would go into the town hall budget, no?
Yes.
Yeah, it would, yeah.
Part of the town hall budget? So. HR, IT, succession. Okay.
Gonna wear your Kevlar underwear?
Yeah, so I mean, back to your, back to kind of Barney's point and and what I'm hearing. You know, it's it's nice to think about those priorities and I just looked back at our sort of goal setting and one of the top goal, one of the top goal setting things was. Financial sustainability, so. We have to recognize, and this is what I've heard, you know, Kate, you were in a lot more of those discussions yesterday than I was, but. The fact that we went flat for a year. Which was, I believe, the prudent thing to do. Is not without a cost, right, and the cost is a great back pressure now on. Normal increases, li- life went on, right, people got increases and costs went up and we held the budget flat, so. We have to brace for a fairly significant, I believe, regardless of, you know, without even hearing from Thinkum, I can already tell. You know, a lot of requests for increases, so. Prioritizing is fine, but everybody, every single department is going to come back with things that they need or. Deferred because of the flat budget last year. And, you know, part of this is just gonna be, maybe it's a broader thing, it's not a priority thing, it's like, how much increase? You know, are we prepared to embrace?
Or how much debt are we willing to take on? One one of the ways you do it is you spread the, spread the cost out over a lot of years. And you pay interest on it.
Well. I don't know how you do that on the operational side.
Oh, you don't, yeah.
I mean, I I'm thinking more the operator, I mean, we can certainly, we can certainly kick the can down the road on, you know. The public safety building and HVAC at the school and blah, 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 I mean, that's relatively straightforward, or we can decide to take on some debt. But the operational budget pressures, I think, are gonna be quite a lot. I I don't know yet, what are we prepared for a five or six percent increase, you know, I mean, that's something. That's a thought piece I would give you to take home and think about because that. In a normal year, we're gonna go two or three percent and two, two or three percent is six percent, and that's kind of where we're at today, so. You gotta think about that.
You're a real downer, you know that?
I mean, actually, Alan, you get to.
Yeah, I know. Okay, liaison reports, have we have any liaison reports?
I've sort of given that, I'll give a little more context on the school, I spent some time with the school helping them. You know. Frame their budget, and and I would just say. Again, I would just say kind of four things about that, one is. As I said at the top, you know, they came in with a seven and a half percent ask, but. If you really dig into that, there are. Four components to what makes that request, one is what I just alluded to, which is the fact that they're coming off a flat budget. And what, how how are they able, and every budget, you know, of course, as we all know that the majority of their costs are. Fixed, not fixed price, but you know. Legally binding contracts. Particularly teachers that have a fixed amount of. Okay, so so that that happened anyway, regardless of the fact that the overall budget was flat. The second piece is, well, how did they do that? Well, they did it the way they always do it, which is they prepaid in the, in their case, last year, four hundred K of expenses. They're not doing that this year, they don't have it, and so this is the. It may not be the permanent, and we had a little debate about that in the FinCom last night, but. It is presently the end of the prepay, which would, regardless of what you think about prepay. It was a practice for many, many years that enabled you to pay forward from a prior year's money to a future year. The year you stop doing that, you would have an immediate lease quarter million dollars. That you have to pay for out of current funds, not out of last year's, so they're in that now at this time. The third thing is that there are a number of covid expenses that were not covered by cares or related. Financings that they have to absorb and probably have to continue to absorb, and that's a cost that is a. Temporary cost, but it's a real cost, and then the fourth thing is that. The decision was made a couple of years ago to shift eighty thousand dollars of. Technology out of a special, you know, out of the long term caps into the operating budget, and this is the year it's finally happening. So when you add all those little pieces, you know, like six hundred thousand of the eight hundred and so thousand that they need is coming out of these. Timing events, and I'm not here to say it's good or bad, but we have to rec, you know, it has to be recognized that. These events are kind of occurring in a perfect storm type situation and. You know, the remedy, if we aren't, if we don't have the appetite for. That kind of an increase. Is probably that they have to make some staff reductions, you know, I mean, that. I don't know where that's all gonna play, but that's, there's not limited levers that the school has to press, you know, at this point, so.
Yeah, but there was also discussion last night about. And I, I didn't write down all the tales, but about. The state and federal aid to the schools and that. They were hearing that that was gonna increase, actually, slightly, the.
Chapter seventy?
Yeah, and so, and then the other one was, there there are three different pots, what are they? I've forgotten. But I didn't write them down, but anyway, I think that's the other piece of this to look at hard now, it's it's really surprising to me if we're gonna get more. State aid, given the state's budget, but that is what I believe it was Jim, or maybe it was Ann, that that reported that back.
Today, which I haven't read, so.
Yeah.
You know, the state recognizes that the districts are hurting, so it wouldn't be surprising.
Right.
Over with some more aid, and there are some other mitig, should be mitigating things, as you said, that could make it a little better, but.
Yeah.
We're unfortunate, you know, we're just paying, we have a confluence of things, only some of which are covid that, you know, are. Amounting to that.
Yeah, I think what Ann had said last night was it was a seven point four eight percent increase. But of that, she thought the. The items you mentioned, David, the carried forward and the eighty thousand for computers. I believe she said that represented, you know, a little like half of it.
No, absolutely, that's absolutely correct.
Three some point something percent increase.
Well, it's, it's a twelve million dollar budget, so that means every percent's a hundred twenty K. I just told you prepay is at least two percent of it, technology is probably three quarters of a percent.
Right.
You know, so you're at your three percent, and that was my point too, your, half of it is stuff that is sort of out of their control.
Right.
The other half is. You know, a combination of the fact that we're two years, we're coming off a flat year budget and. There's covid and there's also needs, there's some, you know, there's some needs of certain demographic of kids right now. Where they need more special education, they just need it, now we could, and and what's been. Presented is a make by decision where the school is advocating for hiring a resource. As compared with a prior practice of outsourcing it, in other words, out of district, and it's probably a cost effective decision. Because one way or the other, you know, the 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 needs of those children have to be accommodated, and the last thing on that point is. There, and this is probably a good thing in the long run, but there's an uptick of. Enrollment and it's no surprise, it goes back to our earlier conversation, it's become a desirable town. People who now can work remotely no longer consider Carlisle, you know. Out in the. The Great Mountains somewhere, right, and and.
But they still don't know where it is.
Beyond is where it is.
About getting on route two and trying.
Right.
Yeah, so so real estate values are going up, which is a good thing, but, you know, and enrollment's gonna go up, is going up, which is a good thing. Uh, but with that, you know, also comes always a some degree of adverse selection, in other words. If you have a, and I don't want to say this badly because my own kids are on IEPs and I'm, you know, happy to tell you that, but. People who have kids with certain needs are gonna look for districts that are. Open to those needs, that's just a fact, and so it's reasonable. That we are gonna have an increase over the time of, you know, special education expenses to to meet those. And then we're seeing it, we're just seeing it. And that's all in the other half, that's all in the three and a half percent, that's not because of, you know, prepaist.
You're on, Barney.
I have a much more. Rosaic, I guess. Does include, though, a a decision, I think, for us as a board. So. In our. In my continuing effort working with Jen and Gary Davis to. You know, try to tighten things up at the transfer station. We have developed a new, we have a. We've been looking at the construction and debris permit. Situation that we've had in the past and we want to change it, so. What we've done in the past, just so everybody's up to date, is that. Although we didn't do this yet last year because we suspended all of that, all of the permitting, but we. Have said, and I'm reading from the application form, you know, a one pickup truck size load. Was gonna cost fifty dollars per load. And then one large truck size load, so. Pickup is considered small and then whatever is larger than that was a truck size load. We were requiring a permit of a hundred and fifty dollars, a payment of a hundred and fifty, and people would go to the police station. And get that permit and then have to show their permit. To somebody at the transfer station in order to be able to dump into the construction and debris bin. And the, what has been happening in the last at least four or five years is that. We have virtually nobody. Buying the hundred and fifty dollar permit that. Either the big, you know, those doing construction projects, developers have. You know, they're they're hiring separate people to take the trash away to some other place. Or people have all been paying just the pickup truck size load. At fifty dollars, and still, it's, and it's not been very. Actively enforced, so. Our proposal is that we. First of all, we move it to town hall and put it online, just as we've done the residential permit stickers. And that we change the structure so that. Any small pickup truck load. You'd be required to have a permit, you know, in the past, the, it's been kind of a. Very much a, well, somebody eyes what you have in your pickup truck, and if it's not very much, then you just go ahead and dump it and you don't need a permit. I mean, that's kind of Gary's and his staff's approach has been that, and. So while it's not gonna be a problem for somebody to go and throw a few pieces of wood into the bin, if you're bringing a pickup truck that's. Half full or more, you'd be expected to get a permit, and that would cost, we'd lower the price from fifty dollars to twenty five. But that would be expected then of anybody in town, and you'd be required to have a valid, you know, residential. Sticker as well, but then you have to go buy a permit to dump that load. Into the construction debris at twenty five dollars, then you'd be given a slip that you'd actually have to turn in to the. Person at the transfer station. And then for for haulers, you know, or or somebody that's that's. You know, maybe a local contractor who is actually bringing a a serious truckload size full. They their permit would cost fifty dollars. So the idea would be, A, well, we try to really enforce that you need a sticker. You need a one day, you need a one load permit every time you want to dump something into that C and D bin. As a way to frankly. Reduce how much goes in there or at least recover income. Because that that costs us quite a bit as a town to to take the, get rid of those, to empty those bins, have those. Taken off site, we pay, I have figures actually, which I could pull out, how much we pay per ton, but it's not cheap. So. And then. I think that's it.
Could there be a way that we do Venmo or PayPal or something?
Yeah.
And the truck comes up and the guys say, whoa, 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 you know. I mean, it just, what are they gonna do? Send them back to town hall and then they have to come back, or they have to know in advance?
Yeah, what it's gonna mean is you're gonna have to plan for it, because it'll mean if you show up on a Saturday morning intending to dump a bunch of stuff. That you cleaned out of your, you know, that you did a home repair project and you have all the. Leftover scraps that you want to get rid of, you're gonna have to plan ahead and get your permit during the week. Uh, which will be as easy to do as it is now to get your residential.
But that's, that takes three days or more because they have to mail me my permit.
Yeah, but you can do this online and this is actually gonna be set up so you can print out your.
So you can print it out, so that go.
Yeah.
So it's not like that, it's not like the sticker.
Right, and you can still walk into town and get town hall, right, and. Right, and you can still walk into town and get um town hall, right, and and do it onsite. Uh, although we're gonna, the idea would be to really, you know, encourage the online purchase of the permit. Um, you know, the, this is a, what really needs to happen is a complete, you know, um, review of of how the transfer station works because um they're all the, you know, I've started to get some numbers and and I'm working with the recycling committee that's worked on this before. But it's the the clear trend line is uh for a variety of reasons is it's costing us more and more to run the transfer station, because we used to get some income from various recyclables. That has shrunk and in some cases, we're now paying money for things that we used to get paid for. Um, so for example, the mixed paper, you know, it costs us to have that removed. Um, and we used to get income from that, so um we we, and and for example, the things that we allow people to bring and leave at the transfer station for free, TVs, tires, refrigerators, you know, large pieces of furniture, um, those all cost us to have those then taken away. And we are looking at what other towns do, and there are very few, I I haven't found any yet that have a setup like ours that allow people to drop off items like that without paying for them. So one of the things that Gary is compiling is a list of the most expensive things for us to uh dispose of and what it actually costs per item, so. Um, for instance, per TV, we know it's about twenty dollars. So one of the things I that we want to look at is, and this would require, um, Kate, I think some kind of you know, we'd have to have some kind of ability uh for people, for the, for the folks at the transfer station to be able to you come to drop off your your TV and you know it's gonna cost you twenty dollars and you can pay for it right then and there. We have to look at into all that and how it would work, but um just short run, the these um permits for use of the construction and debris bin have just not been, it's, they've just not been priced right and they haven't been enforced. And so we're trying to, this is a very small, you know, attempt of trying to do that in this one particular area. So we we would like the the support or the approval of the select board to make this change in the in the permit fees for the construction and debris.
Is that written down somewhere?
No.
Can we get it written down? Uh, I I mean, I've, I hate to do things anecdotally, but.
Right, I get you. Do you, as in the the motion to approve of something written, written that just describes what I just.
Right, yeah.
And then a motion to approve it.
I mean, you know, like, how's the truck defined and that kind of stuff, yeah.
Right, right, yep, I can um. At the next meeting.
Okay, fine, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'm in support of the overall, um, you know, I've I've long advocated that the um transfer station be self supporting, so.
Well, Gary's definitely, you know, moving more in the direction of um.
Yeah, I got two TVs here that I need to get rid of. I better do this.
Me too.
That that comes under the the heading of insider trading, though, right?
A photographer out there taking your picture, Kate, at the transfer station.
Oh, no, if she does it within the current rules.
That's right, if I, you know.
What I have to do is like what the stock guys, you know, the CEOs all say, oh, it's part of a regularly scheduled removal of debris. I know about that rate change.
Okay, yeah, let's put it on the next meeting, Barney, if you just get that, maybe get it to us before a meeting, we can look it over. Thank you.
Will do.
Alrighty, anybody else? Hearing none, approval of minutes and warrants. I didn't see any minutes, so.
I didn't see any minutes either.
I think we just have warrants. We got three warrants tonight.
Thank you for doing that again, Barney.
Yes.
No problem.
Very good, thank you.
And uh, adjournment.
Well, I move, we adjourn.
Sorry, second. All those, all those, roll call vote.
Time will die.
Louis I.
Model I.
Red I.
Thank you, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Our best when you talk to her.
Will do, yep.
Thank you.
All right.